One call of July 24, 2025, O'Fallon City Council Workshop Order. Roll call, Jill.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
She's excused.
Councilmember Coskella.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
I have folks you have agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Bibb.
motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything on the council agenda that you folks want to talk about? Seeing none. Workshop discussion items and any motions second to approve the council workshop meeting minutes of July 10, 2025.
Coskella.
Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Coskella, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is traffic roundabout landscaping presentation. Mr. Dirduff.
Good evening, council members. Mayor. I have the privilege of presenting some concepts to you of what to entertain to do with the roundabouts that are being developed. One's under development now and we're going to be putting in more. So, we've had some discussion and we came up with some concepts to run past all of you for feedback. But before I dive in too deep, there's some new council members maybe who don't know, and I apologize to all of you that have heard this before, but the landscape division is responsible for grounds care other than parks. So, the city owns a lot of property that is not park property. So, my crew mows and then we do some of the more sophisticated horticulture work in the parks, the flowers. And I tell people anything with mulch on it is my problem. So, that kind of made me nutshells how I fit under Bill's umbrella and how we do things with the parks landscape. Someday, we're going to change it to the grounds care division, but we'll stick with landscaping because this is actually a landscaping project. So, O'Fallon Traffic Roundabout Landscape, I was told what can we do to do something with this? So, we did a computer rendering just to show you quickly what it might be. Stamped concrete circle, which I think everyone is familiar with, but then inside the concrete, stamped concrete circle. So, diving headfirst in, this is what a computer rendering is of the daytime. The obelisk in the middle is just a placeholder for artwork. We decided maybe lighting would be nice, so there's a nighttime rendering of the concept. Soak that in for a minute. And then we go straight into the levels that we talked about. We thought we'd narrow it down to three, and you can see by the green checkmark, A column is what we're calling an enhanced presentation. If you look down at the bottom, you'll see that that A level has some annual flowers. Will require some mulching. And what we thought was appropriate, and listening for your feedback, is any roundabout in the proximity of Main Street where we have our hanging baskets, we would duplicate that flower presentation in the roundabout. What does that look like? Here's a rendering of that one. This is A, the enhanced version, and I'll probably just refer to them as A, B, and C. We're prospectively maybe putting it on Tom Ginevra and Cool Springs. This would have all of the elements, and you can see on the, like at the seven o'clock, eight o'clock position and over on the three o'clock position are flower beds. So, the next one would be the flower beds are removed. This is B, irrigated lawn. We would keep the lawn as part of the feature. That would require irrigation for us to keep it in good order. And all the rest of the elements are the same except it doesn't have the flowers. And then C is what we were calling basic, and we were thinking about putting these out on Deer Road. Maintenance of these is a factor for me, and we're that far out, that's a special trip to go out and deal with this. So, we were reluctant to recommend this be mowed, and so we took the lawn off of it, and it wouldn't, would not be irrigated. We would go out there with our tanks and we would, crisis water is what I called it. So, today is a hot day, but there's plenty of moisture in the ground from Sunday night's rain Monday morning, so we wouldn't even be going out there now. But that was a factor, and it's a factor in the long-term expense and the construction expense. So, the one thing that I don't have a handle on, and I'm not sure it's for me, but I wanted to give you some examples of what the art would be. These are the roundabouts in Carmel, a heavy favorite by someone in the room, and they had a theme, a sports theme, which was a clever idea. Here's another one. This is in Carmel outside their music hall. You can see above the bases like old Victrola trumpet look, and I think the artist was trying to capture the sound of the music through a visionary perspective. So, that one had a purpose for why it was put in by the performance hall. And then another one, just simple roses and some contemporary art. So, those are some ideas, but that's not anchored in this plan today that I'm presenting. I'm all about plants. And when I heard that we wanted to do some planting, immediately I thought about Alligators' Creek because I'm pretty happy with that landscape. It's seven, this is the seventh summer, and it is a very low maintenance, high performing, beautiful flowers all the time, but it's peaks for the summer. So, if you look across the pinkish flowers or the ones with the red center, those are hibiscus. And the flowers that are all white are flowering shrubs. These are all flowering shrubs. Two different types of hydrangea to spread out the bloom time. The one in the top right blooms first, and then the one between the two hibiscus, that will pick up later now in July, and it's blooming. You probably see a lot of hydrangeas around town. I never thought I would be doing this with hydrangeas. I was always afraid that they needed, that they were thirsty and they would need too much care, but that doesn't seem to be the case. They hold up pretty well. And roses, or knockout roses got very popular, and we were planting knockout roses, and then the rose rosette virus came. So, I think hydrangea has become the go-to plant because we had to abandon the roses. Oh, one other thing, this landscape kind of disappears because it defoliates in the wintertime. So, the bottom left is a juniper, the bottom right is a creeping juniper. I intend for those to be something, some element of interest in the wintertime to, like a backbone plant. It's there all year long. Here's an example of a mowed ring. I think I cheated. That's actually artificial grass. And then I've seen people drive through roundabouts, whether, whatever their intention is, whether they're not paying attention or they are irritated with roundabouts, but particularly the one on Bryan Road, Ted's smiling. When they first put that in, it was one car after another cutting across. So, I do think that this type of rock boulder fortress look is probably not the message we want to send. We want it there to be a deterrent, so I'm leaning towards stacks of ledge rock with the idea that they're big enough and stacked high enough to see, but if a car collides with them, they'll slide apart. So, like a breakaway feature similar to what MoDOT has for signs and such, the car's going to get damaged, but I'm not sure the driver of the car is going to suffer consequences. But that's at least the concept that I'm pushing forward on. And then I had chosen a, what they call cobble. It's a larger stone, like the size of a baked potato or a little bigger, till I found out that that was, that proposal was going to be $17,000, and I said, no, we're going to, we'll do something else. So, we're going with something that's more gravel. I don't like gravel because it tends to migrate off where you put it, but I don't know. I think the other stuff might be cost prohibitive. But that's really not for me to decide, but I thought I'd at least share the number with you. And then whatever we do on Main Street will be the flower display in the A category. This was last year's hanging baskets. And here's another look at during the daytime what we're considering. Here's another nighttime version. And that's what we've got to present. Questions if you want, and I can zoom back up here to the checkmark page if you want to refer to that, and then the three slides after that. If you want to, want me to go back and forth, I can.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, can you go back to the three sports roundabouts? So, we have a couple of things at play here, and Bob mentioned the one which was the proximity to Main Street or to downtown. Those are going to be larger roundabouts when and if they're built and have more gravitas, if you will, because they're within the seat of government type of thing. Down on Deer Road, though, they're going to be fairly small roundabouts, and there's going to be, by the time the project's finished, somewhere between three and five that we're responsible for. So, the idea of having the three you see are literally three roundabouts, one right after the other on Hazel Del Parkway in Carmel, and it just had a unifying theme of sports. So, the point of this is to have a unifying theme throughout those three to five roundabouts so that it's visually appealing to the public. So, it doesn't have to be sports by any stretch of the imagination, but we were looking to do some sort of unifying theme. And then the others could have a theme or not, but they don't have to all be the same thing throughout the city, is what we've learned from Carmel and their 150-plus roundabouts, that not, no two look alike unless you're referring to the theme of their sports figures. That's all I have at this point. Thanks.
Questions? Comments? Well, I think the ones on Main Street should, my guess would be maybe something to do with the rail district. Choo-choo train. Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you. Just a comment. I would like, I understand not wanting to put like the big tall boulders that, you know, somebody could like really wreck into, but I would definitely like to see some height with some of these roundabouts, maybe even more than just, you know, a couple inches high. I would like to see a little bit of height just to try and cut off people driving through.
We did discuss that, and engineering spec shows for a three-foot crown of mounded soil up to the center, and then it'll have an eight-by-eight concrete pad for the art on top of that. So, it will be heaping. I don't know if that's enough of a deterrent. If somebody's going to drive through it, then the rock is what's going to make them stop. But there's a curbing. I'll go back to that. Go back up to here. See that white, the white curbing? We, I just stuck that on the thing because I didn't know we were going to have that until maybe Monday, Tuesday. So, it looks like it's standing way above. The grass will be level with that, but that would also be somewhat of a obstruction to try to at least bounce you back into where you should be. But I understand what you're trying to do. If we were going to stack these rocks, do you have an idea how tall the stack should be, you think?
This might be a little extreme, but I would say at first I was thinking as high as the oncoming traffic's headlights, but that might be too high. But I would like to see it, you know, a good foot and a half, two feet at least.
Yeah, I agree. I was aiming at 24 inches so that it would be visible above the plant growth, that you wouldn't just be fooled to think that it was only plant growth, that you would actually see the rock. And that's why they are positioned of, I'll go back up here to the overhead view. Well, you might not be able to tell, but the rocks are out on the outer perimeter rather than up near the sculpture base. They're out on the edges of the white ring, or the, well, the grass.
My concern is if you get too high, nobody's going to see the plants. Mr. Snowden.
Couple other items that I didn't mention before. One is the cost. With the exception of Crusher and Weldon Spring Road, the cost is intended to be built into the cost of the project. That one, this effort has started after that was planned and funding was secured, but is our intent that moving forward, the cost is part of the project, not an additional cost that is borne by the city per se. The other piece of it is how do we come about the artwork? And we've had discussion, is it part of a rotating exhibit? And I think the professional opinions are that you want to put it out there and not go mess with it, especially since it's in traffic. And so, it would be semi-permanent artwork in that it would only move if it deteriorated or was somehow damaged. And then we think that it would probably be best, and then again, looking for input from this body, to have the Cultural Arts Commission be part of this discussion to identify the artwork. The actual identification of the artwork, we understand, would be relatively easy in that we would put a call for artists, just like we do with our rotating art exhibits that we have now. And so, we would, in theory, if we wanted to say, for instance, the theme was sports on Deer Road, and we're going to have five roundabouts, we would put out a call for artists to interpret how that would look and what they would do, and then it would be judged in theory by the CAC and move forward from there. So, very similar to what we do now with our rotating art exhibit, it would just be in roundabouts instead. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, as far as using the Cultural Arts Commission, I completely agree. I think that would be a good use of their talents. But the question I had is the stack ledge stone, when you showed the barrier with the big rocks, it was continuous around, but what I'm seeing in the renderings is it seems to be more spot-placed. Is it a continuous ring? Is it a partial ring? Is it just here and there? How's that work?
It would, sorry. It would be on each quadrant so that as you're coming in, as you make that turn to proceed around the circle, it would be there.
Be center, basically, as you're coming in?
It would be to the driver's right. You would have to begin making the turn. If you went straight through, let me go back to where this, if you would go straight through, you would hit the art. So, I'm looking at bringing the rock, you come around the curve. If you're tempted to cut across, there's a big rock right there. That's what I was thinking, or a stack of rocks.
Okay, I think I misunderstood that because my thought was is that somehow we'd want to protect, you know, from somebody just asleep at the wheel, if you will, and driving straight through it.
So, you would prefer a ring all the way around of rock?
No, no. Just something where the barrier was able to protect the art from somebody who failed to notice that there's a roundabout.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Taylor.
I was just curious, what is the cost to maintain these?
A, B, or C? So, the maintenance cost of the A, mostly manpower to go deal with these, is probably $9,000 a year per roundabout. And then B is just under $8,000 a year, and C would be $1,900 a year. The mowing and the irrigation means multiple visits through the course of the year. What we learned the hard way with the two clip sites, the one at DD and the one at Winghaven, putting the flagpoles in means we have to go raising lower flags a lot. And that round trip to go from Veterans Walk to those two clip sites takes somebody at least an hour and a half, sometimes two hours. So, we always try to do something in that proximity while we're there, but it's more than we thought. We underestimated that.
Anybody else? Mr. Snowden.
I probably should have stood down with Bob. That's one of the reasons, because it's so manpower-intensive with those A level, that that's what's intended to be down here on Main Street, because in theory, as they're mowing City Hall, they can go to Third and Main and mow, and it's, we're not driving down to Deer Road multiple times to mow, things like that. So, that was the reason that that A level is reserved for these downtown areas and potentially Tom Ginevra and Cool Springs. I'm not even sure that's going to get the A level, to be honest with you. It might end up being a B level as well.
Debbie.
Is there any chance of going back and doing something like this to the one over there on Elaine? The one that people do drive straight across?
You mean just rocks? Just put rocks in?
Something in, but you know, to beautify it a little bit, too, the flowers, even if we just said something basic where it's not a lot of manpower all the time. But I mean, we were standing there for a meeting, and we watched people just drive, drive the wrong way, drive over it. So, I didn't know if there was something, any plans maybe to go back and do, maybe Elaine also?
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you. So, your point is well-taken, but there's a couple of opportunities there, or challenges even. One is people do drive through it all the time, so I'm not sure that you really want to put something out there for them to hit. Second of all, that's not a roundabout. That's a bunch of concrete in the middle of the street, to be honest with you, right? And so, it would probably be better for us to beautify the sides.
Or just take it out.
Or just take it out. That's a whole nother discussion. Please keep in mind that that decision was made when I wasn't the city administrator, so. But there are definitely challenges there because of its size and what happens there. So, perhaps it's beautify the sides and not the middle.
Well, I think if you put rocks, they're only going to get hit so many times, and then those people will finally get the hint, you know, and maybe some lights so that people are like, okay, there's rocks here, we can't cut through anymore. But I don't know, it's just a thought. If we're going to start beautifying them, I thought maybe that was one that we could also attempt, because we're going to have a rather large one at Bryan Road and West Terra at some point. And with that one, you're going to have semis and things like that going around. So, we're going to have to definitely do something to keep it from being driven over and things like that, so just some thoughts.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting me be here.
Glad you could be here. Next is review of upcoming Planning and Zoning Commission agenda items.
Hello. So, this is usually a preview of what's coming up on our next P&amp;Z meeting, but it's kind of turned into what's not going to be, because we've got a few things kind of get tabled and one withdrawn, but I still have them as slides because I think they're important topics to let you know what's been talked about. But first off, we did have old business that I didn't have a slide for, but this one got tabled at our last meeting, 921 Highway K. They were doing a contractor service there, their one to fence in, kind of right, this is kind of right behind Line's Choice there. We have that on there, so that's, sounds like that's going to be moving forward as a conditional use for contractor service. So, that's old business, but I didn't have a slide. This one here, we've been working on this one this week, and they've just asked for this to be tabled, 1,000 Landing Circle Drive. This was approved probably three years ago now. This is at O'Fallon Road and Highway K for apartments kind of up here on the north half, and then they had some commercial lots down here. There's a Circle K on the corner, and then they had a mixed juice apartment building retail on the first floor and a couple stories of apartments above that. They are, that's no longer moving forward, so we've got a new plan. And this was the plan that we had received. We had a lot of comments on this, and they've resubmitted a new layout. But I just wanted to show you what we had first, this is what we had the first time around. We had some comments about the streets, and there's a lot of dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs, and the layout just didn't work really for our trash trucks and different things like that, and this, the maintenance was a problem. The other twist on this is Landing Circle, which goes down to the south to O'Fallon Road, which is, if you can kind of, you know, O'Fallon Road's down here. This road is private in front of the senior development here, and these are, these are for sale units, so we require that to be a public street. So, it's kind of different where we've got a private street that's kind of going right into a public street. And then we've got the same thing happening here. This is a public street, and this road going out to Highway K is really the drive, it's a shared drive, but it goes back to the Duckett Creek office, office building there. So, we had comments on that, and then, so we got a new plan yesterday, and this is the new layout, which we like better, but this raised up a whole bunch more comments that there were, there's a new layout, so we had some new comments. We talked to them today, they just decided to table it. They wanted, we wanted to meet with them again, so I just tell you all that, that's been going on. But it'll be, it's still, it'll be on the agenda because we put the sign up and all that, but it'll be tabled, and it'll be coming back, I guess, to the council later, but.
Go ahead, Debbie.
So, originally those were going to be all apartments. We're looking at single-family lots now? Is that what it says?
Oh, sorry, yeah. So, these are fourplexes, like townhomes. So, it's definitely a change. So, before it was 204 apartments, now 68 townhomes. So, it's a number, it's a reduction in the units, but they are, they're four, and they have garages. Yeah. They said, I forget the models, but it's McBride is the one that's, I think the model is the elevations away toward McBride.
And they're still putting commercial out there. They're still putting commercial.
We had that as a comment, like we talked about. They said, we'll do that later, so that's another, so, yeah. So, we're going to have the same comment we had before, so, yep.
Amanda, hold on. Go ahead.
Are the townhomes rentals?
These are for sale. For sale, yeah. That's just a landscaping plan. Okay, so this is a Plumery Plats, so this is a public hearing. So, this one's got a twist on it also. So, they're creating some new lots here, and that's going to be on the agenda. It'll be moving forward. But we also received a site plan for this lot, which is a McDonald's was, is proposed. They've asked for that to be withdrawn now. It'll be on our agenda because we've already done, you know, a couple of things. We can't just take it off the agenda. They've asked for it to be withdrawn, but this plat, for all of it, would still be on. They, with the McDonald's, they did say they want to come back later, but for now, they want to ask, they're asking for it to be withdrawn. We actually get, I forget exactly, but I know we at least received like 10 emails on people having concerns with the McDonald's from the neighborhood, but the McDonald's will be, are withdrawn now, but we'll still have the plat on the agenda for the different This is just the plat. On this, on this drawing, this is where the, is that Motomart? I get the gas station mixed up. I think that's the Motomart, and this is the McDonald's lot. And then I just, I left the plan in here just so you kind of knew what McDonald's was This is a better shot of it, so. This is Highway DD, DD out here, and then this is that kind of right and only that comes in. Here's the gas station, so they'd have an access here, and this is all private and a new access here, and then this is Dal Riata down here, and the drive-through goes around So, yeah, it's mostly stuff we, we're not really going to have on the agenda, but yeah.
Steve, it'll be a short night there, brother. Any other questions for David? Thank you, sir. Any other consideration? Seeing none, we're adjourned. I want to call July 24, 2025, O'Fallon City Council Meeting Order. Roll call, Beth.
Mayor Hennessy.
Present.
Councilmember Wexler.
Present.
Councilmember Roth.
Present.
Councilmember Boyer.
Present.
Councilmember Thompson.
She's excused.
Councilmember Bibb.
Present.
Councilmember Coskella.
Present.
Councilmember Kewen.
Present.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember Cook.
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale.
Present.
Everyone please stand if the invocation by Police Chaplain Michael Atherton, Senior Pastor from First Baptist Church of O'Fallon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Boyer.
May I approach you? Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We're grateful to be able to come in your presence. Father, we have great confidence. Father, we have great confidence that you hear our prayers and you answer our prayer according to your sovereign will. Father, we thank you today for our great city and for our leaders who serve the city so well. Father, we pray that you would give them great wisdom in all of their dealings. Father, we pray that you would help us, each and every one of us, citizens to leaders aspire to help make this place the very, very best place it can be. Father, we pray for our schools as they get ready to start back up. Father, we pray for another successful school year for our children and grandchildren, respectively. Father, we pray that you keep, watch over them, keep them safe in all things. Father, we thank you for our first responders. We thank you for those who work so hard to keep our city safe. Father, we pray that in everything that we do, we would honor you and that you would continue to bestow your great blessings upon us. For it's in your name, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you got an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Second, Wexler.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion passes. The only thing I have on the Presiding Officer's report is a belated happy birthday to my wife, whose birthday was last week, so happy birthday to her. So, it moves us to citizens' comments. Three minutes. Mr. Dinoff.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Arne C., AC Dinoff, City Public Advocate. The first issue I want to go over is Bill Number 7769. This is a conditional use permit for a great coffee shop. They have three other facilities within our city. This, I believe, will be their, our fourth, or the fourth is probably on the border with the city of St. Peters. Not sure which jurisdiction it actually is in, but we want to start creating and generating these sales taxes. Bill Number 7772, hopefully the city attorney, in his wisdom, fixed the deficiencies of the city code regarding liquor licenses and the change in state statutes regarding liquor, beer sales, wine sales, Sunday liquor sales, all of that, all-in-one ball of wax. On the consent agenda, there's a full liquor license for Daniel Simpler. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly, at 1120 Technology Drive. I want to ensure that our police department did the correct background and necessary documentation and to check that this is a good person of moral ethics and doesn't sell to minors. We want to make sure that that background check was done satisfactory. Hopefully, we'll hear from Police Chief Mimi about that. Goodwood Brewing Company LLC is changing their managing officer. The same with that. I'd like to hear a report from our police chief if the background check was successful and to make sure that there's no violations with selling to minors or other state, county, and local liquor license violations. Resolution B, a change order of $458,000 is very concerning with the lift station, the basin improvement change order. I'd like to hear from Mr. Bender and his sewer and surface water people why a $458,000 change order is needed when it was bid out and they were the lowest, most competitive bid person for that. The final issue that I'd like to talk about is allowing in the code, the change of the code, which I had that bill number, and I can't find, let's see, Bill Number 7770. And basically, I'm asking the City Council to offer both materials at the discretion of the builder. Leave it up to the builder. Don't abolish the use of PVC valve, but leave it up to the builder. That's the title, Land Use in Chapter 405. I'm in favor of keeping 40 PVC in addition to allowing SDR 26. In my opinion, there's gasket issues, there's separation issues if you do your homework and your research.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Six-inch of PVC materials, I'm all for that. I think we need to increase that for residential areas. By going to SDR, the volume means thinner walls, lower pressure rating, and it causes issues if you read about it across the country.
Time is up, sir.
Thank you very much.
We have no other citizens' comments, and on his comments on the liquor license, I can guarantee if our police department said it wasn't very good, it would not be on our agenda. So, I trust our police department to do their checks, and if their checks didn't pan out, it would not be on our agenda. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, sir, 100%.
Thank you. Brings us to Ward Reports. Ward Four.
I'm up. So, this week I received a phone call from one of the residents at the Senior Living Communities. They reported seeing a man sleeping behind a nearby dumpster, and it was a reminder of the importance of having neighbors who care enough to speak out and how fortunate we are to have a police department that not only keeps our community safe, but also goes the extra mile to connect individuals in crisis with our resources that they need. Now, I can go on and on, as I often do, about how great I think our police department is and leadership, but today I wanted to focus on something else, why that phone call matters. You know, when residents engage, we feel, they feel seen and heard, and our city becomes stronger. That's why I proposed the You, Your City, Your Voice initiative as part of our upcoming city's three-year strategic plan. It's a call for us to, you know, create and publicize more opportunities for public input and expand the civic participation beyond the narrow format of the city council meetings. You know, if we truly want to serve our people, we need to open up more avenues, I think, for genuine two-way communication, because when residents are invited to participate in city decisions, they form a deeper connection to their community and gain more trust for leadership. So, that sense of ownership, I think, brings pride, trust, and long-term investment in where we live. And residents need to know that their voice matters, and so let's make sure that we have even more avenues for them to be heard. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Kewen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to go over the speaker's commentary on plumbing. SDR 26 is accepted nationwide. You can look it up in the American Society for Plumbing Engineer. You can read several articles about it in Plumbing Engineering Magazine, which is not available to the general public. You have to be a subscribed member. Or you can talk to an engineer who's been designing it for decades. SDR 26, SDR piping in general has been accepted for plumbing for well over a decade. 26, by the way, is thicker than 35. The gasketting material is actually quite strong in SDR. In fact, they found that statistically, you're less likely to see a leak in SDR 26 than your PVC piping, if there's any shifting in the groundwork, because SDR 26 actually allows for some flexibility. And as far as pressure in your sanitary system, sanitary system is gravity. It operates at zero PSI at all times. If there's ever any pressure in it, that means that you have a serious backup. In fact, I would suggest that if you had a backup because it was plugged, you still wouldn't exceed one PSI, which is why PVC's been the standard bearer for sanitary piping in the last 60 or 70 years, and SDR 26 for the last 20. So, I wouldn't worry about it. We're updating this code to make it more compliant and to give a better product for our residents. So, I'm going to support it. Thanks.
Ward Five.
Thank you. I have nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that the St. Charles County Fair is going on through Saturday. It is at Rotary Park in Wentzville. I will be there fighting the heat, although supposedly I will be in an air-conditioned building from 4 until 8 tomorrow, and I hope you all come on out and see what County Fair has to offer. I also want to mention the Traveling Vietnam Wall. I don't know if any of you have seen the one in DC. I've seen both DC and the Traveling Wall. I have found my uncle's name on there. It is a very humbling experience, whether you have a loved one on that wall or not. But if you have the time and can make the truck down to Jefferson Barracks, it'll be here through Sunday. It is definitely a wonderful thing to see, a great part of history to go and see the Traveling Wall. And then finally, thank you to the O'Fallon Police Department for allowing our MIAC students to come and tour the Justice Center the other day. I went with them, and even I, I saw parts of the Justice Center that I did not see when I first joined the council, and it was fantastic, and thank you to the officer that took us on that tour. Thank you.
Ward One.
Thank you. Nothing for me tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Roth.
Same here, nothing. Ward One's a quiet place right now.
Mr. Boyer.
Ward Two's quiet as well. I've got nothing for tonight.
Last but not least, the great folks from Ward Three.
Let's get this meeting going. Nothing for me.
Mr. Bibb.
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Snowden.
I wish I had no report. However, I authorized an emergency purchase on July 10 of an HVAC system for the Model Train Club building at Fort Zumwalt Park. We had gotten bids for a new system for the 2026 budget, but the system went out prior to budget approval. Because we could not wait for council approval at a meeting, we considered this an emergency purchase to install the system, and will create a mid-year budget adjustment later for the actual transfer of funds. The actual cost of the system is $5,480. I also authorized an emergency repair on July 11 from the Recreation Department because the backwash pipe on the Lazy River at Alligators Creek had burst and had to be repaired immediately because the feature was out of service until that repair occurred. This repair was authorized at an amount not to exceed $5,000. But wait, there's more. On July 17, I authorized an emergency repair due to an electrical issue that occurred at the wastewater treatment plant. The repair was authorized for $124,205, and was required because we did not have a backup power source for the plant, which was deemed to be critical. There are additional repairs that will be needed due to the situation found, but those repairs will be handled under our normal purchasing rules. I provided this information to the council on all three issues when they occurred, but this should be considered by official notification for the record. And lastly, I'd like to wish a happy upcoming birthday to Councilmember Bibb, and that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to old business. Mr. Bibb.
Mayor, I would like to recuse myself from voting on Bill Number 7769.
Brings the new bit, old business, brings the Bill 7769. Motion for second reading by Title Only.
Coskella.
Motion by Coskella, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7769, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to the owners of Three Kings Properties to allow a coffee shop with a drive-through and a C2 General Business District under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at four of Shady Creek Commercial, on Lot Four, I'm sorry, of Shady Creek Commercial, within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Coskella.
Coskella, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7769 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7229.
7229. Thank you, Bess. Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
Are we going to tell them?
Brings us to Bill 7770. Motion for second reading by Title Only.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7770, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending Section 405.250 of the O'Fallon City Code regarding development standards for sanitary sewer laterals.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Seeing none, councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. 7770 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7230.
72?
30.
7230. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7771. Motion for second reading by Title Only.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7771, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a petition for voluntary annexation filed by KD Distributing LLC regarding certain property contiguous in compact to the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, and generally located west of 921 Highway K.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Seeing none, councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7771 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7231.
7231. Thank you, Bess. Brings to Bill 7772. This is on the table. A motion to remove Bill 7772 from the table. Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Coskella.
Second by Coskella. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Motion passes. Brings to Bill 7772. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Number 7772, an ordinance amending Sections 600.010 and 600.030 of the city of, I'm sorry, of the O'Fallon City Code regarding liquor licenses.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7773. Motion for second reading by Title Only.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilman Taylor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill Number 7773, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding for Public Safety Communication Services with St. Charles Community College.
Thank you. Most final passage.
Kewen.
Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Taylor.
Second by Councilman Taylor. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. 7773 passed, becomes ordinance number?
7232.
7232. Thank you, Bess. Question or comments on the Committee and Commission reports? Stand is read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Wexler.
Second by Councilman Wexler. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting's closed.
Nine yes, zero no. The consent calendar's been approved. Brings to Bill 7774. Motion for first reading?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilwoman Ragsdale. Councilwoman Cook, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Number 7774, an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the wrapping of traffic signal and lighting facilities along Highway K.
Thank you. Brings to Bill 7775. Motion for first reading?
Coskella.
Motion by Coskella, second.
Bib.
Second by Councilman Bib. Second by Councilman Bib. Councilman Coskella, please present the bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Number 7775, an ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of streets and storm sewers excluding detention for maintenance by the city of O'Fallon, Missouri, for Streets of Caledonia, Plat 6.
Thank you. Question or comments on Resolution 724, 2025A? Mr. Roth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to touch on this next level construction. I had brought some concerns up with some of the other members of the council and employees. I think if next level concrete's going to do some work in areas, they need to have, quote, a boneyard that they can put their equipment, their chemicals, their tools up out of the reach of children playing in neighborhoods. Me and Councilman Wexler drove through a subdivision, and they had all their stuff laying out, all their chemicals, their generators, their gas cans, and it just wasn't a safe area for anybody, adults, kids, or anything. So I think if we do any more work with next level or let them finish what they're doing, they really need to clean up the area. And we had multiple residents complain how they tore up their yards, which is going to cost the city a couple bucks to fix it. So I'd kind of like to see next level be accountable for some safety procedures, and that's all I got, Mayor.
Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Roth and Wexler brought that to staff attention. We did review that. We got ahold of them, and they did move those items away from where they were. That was a lack of communication between city staff and them. In other words, they didn't ask for permission, and we didn't know they had done it. That has since been moved to our overflow parking lot on the other side of the tracks here, and so it's away from any neighborhoods. Regarding damage to, well, it's not necessarily private property because it's in the, in the right of way, and we have an easement, but that's all fixed by the company before they vacate the area. So if they have vacated the area and that has not been fixed, we certainly need to know about that. But we believe that they will. The subdivisions they've done so far in this process, they have made those repairs. So please let us know, though.
Any other questions or comments on the resolution? Ms. Ragsdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just ask, if this had been such an issue that it warranted letting city staff and some city council members know that there was an issue, since we're voting on this, I think it would have been appropriate to possibly let all city, or all county, or city council members know that there's a potential issue, if this is something that is really concerning that we're voting on, because tonight is the first night that I have heard about such a thing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Most second to approve? First reading, or for reading?
Coskella.
Motion by Coskella, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any pose, Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 724, 2025A, a resolution authorizing change order number two with next level construction LLC, providing for the 2025 concrete program in an amount not to exceed $109,951.
Most second to approve?
Coskella.
Motion by Coskella, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.